What's up everybody? This is the poker coaching study session. Today we're gonna be looking at uh one oh nine that Kelly played on. ACR uh took second place for six point five K so let's see how he does it. I think this is your second bullet.
Probably.
You can tell in the lobby.
Says two here.
If it says two, it should be, yeah.
Okay, we defend our king, they sing a small bad. Forty big blind. And eight like this, you check raise or do you just call?
I think calling's better.
I call. Mostly, I mean, it might raise a little tiny bit, but I'm calling.
I normally don't check raise uh top pair unless I've got like a ten X, it'd be king ten or X plus for me to check raise here, I think.
I think on that board, king ten's probably better, something like king ten plus, cuz you block straights and yeah redraws if you need them, blah, blah, blah.
This board is super wet and it already has locked up equity.
Okay, so yeah, not too much raising at all. Check, but two. And like king eight, oh, especially bad, I don't know why.
Well, look at the texture.
Yeah, like Kelly said, you need king ten or better.
Yeah, but king seven is better as well.
I guess you might be blocking some of his marginal continues with an eight or something like if he's at, you need him to have like ten eight or nine eights.
We'll call, check, second bullet.
Yeah, that's how he bets big, is it ten point five?
He bets really big.
Gotta call.
Yeah, you do. The five is a complete brick, so like. I don't think folding is good at all, actually. I think if this guy's appropriately polarizing, you're just getting ran over.
I mean, it does fold forty percent, but calling's still pretty good.
And then I'm curious because like is it calling out every other one but mixing the eight? Check, bet pop.
Yeah, the eight might be particularly bad, right? I don't know.
It's a good question, actually.
It's just mixing, even king, oh wait, king nine.
Yeah, so you see that thing here where eight, seven, and six is bad? And then the king four, the four three do's don't block anything.
Right.
So eight, seven, six, is he bluffing? Eight, seven, six, probably, right? We need, then eight, uh yeah, the eight, I see. Well, the eighth is really bad because it's the bottom of the. This is worse bluffs, basically. So you can mix.
Yikes, man.
Close one.
The deuce on the river is kinda scary.
He didn't know he was playing a calling station.
What do you do if he triples off?
Yeah, good question.
Stuff, right?
I let it go, I fold.
Yeah, for sure.
I'm, I'm probably.
It's like a two, three ten.
I don't, I don't know, I, I, I've been folding in those spots a lot, I don't know much about this guy, so I probably would fold.
Not having a diamond, I'd probably find a call.
Question, can we look at the river? Do we have any blocking bet there?
Probably not, considering it's just a complete brick two. The two doesn't really do anything, right?
But I am a calling station, so I can call that pretty easy, too.
No, it does block some. It actually chooses these weak kings to block with. Which is pretty interesting.
Why did you think about blocking here, Joey?
Because we were just, I just came up when we were discussing whether you call or fold if he bets on the river. And then it just came in my head, well, if he, if he bets small, we could call, but then I realized, well, we can block that small and protect ourselves.
Well, I think clubs is the thing that you should call with because you've got diamonds on the flop there. So I think clubs is a good bluff catcher here.
So if you block any jams, are you calling?
It's an easy fold, right?
It would have to be, I would think.
Well, let's.
I think if we check and he.
First, is it?
I don't think. I don't think block betting is good here.
We're on the triple off node right now, actually. Let's finish the triple off and then we'll do the block bet. Louis went triple off first.
Well, yeah, I did, and it's scalling with.
Yeah, we're king eight off. Oh no, I'm sorry, we're shooting clubs, yeah.
If we. Now we get away from it. If we don't block, we have to call it off.
You don't really get away from it, you're still supposed to kinda call king eight there. You got the offsuit one.
You fold.
Yeah, we got clubs.
All the other two.
Oh, we do have clubs, you're right, I'm sorry.
You fold this bait which you have in majority because of turning, you know?
What is clubs calling the same frequency? I couldn't see the bo- we can't see the bottom, is clubs calling the same frequency as hearts or whatever it was? We can't see the very bottom of the page.
Is it good now?
I can see the bottom of the.
I can now.
I can.
But the, when it was king eight, I couldn't see the bottom, I didn't see what the clubs were doing. So it calls a bit more than the hearts, not much.
It doesn't call more, it just has it more frequently.
Understood, okay.
Says called ninety-nine percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So I guess check call would have been just as good.
I, I think you don't block bet there because of the texture of the board, Joey, in my opinion. I don't, I don't see what it, I don't think it accomplishes anything.
So limp here, I think that's really good.
He's gotta call you with jack X, I think, Kelly.
Yeah.
I just don't know if he, is he polarizing the turn with jacks though, was the thing I was wondering.
Right, don't know.
I'm sure about leading.
You are, you are a calling station.
Um, this is, I think this is good, Louis, like you got three to a straight, three to a flush, and it's gonna be very hard to defend. Like it's a deuce, deuce queen, like this seems okay. When you get ready.
I think the paired board I have to defend with some hands, I don't want to here.
Need it over, right?
To check on the flow.
And it is an eighty-four percent call, alright.
Yeah, calling here seems sticky, but you gotta have jack of hearts. Check, bet, gonna call again?
Well, if you pick up a heart, you're definitely gotta call.
Oh my goodness, Kelly.
So I don't know, I don't like calling there.
Oh my goodness, Kelly. What is this simple raise?
He picked up, he picked up a gut shot and a flush draw.
It's actually good. Spicy.
Hmm, flashy.
His only error was he didn't go large enough.
Twenty big blinds, like seriously? Alright. So why did you pull it off, Kitty?
Thought the guy was full shit.
Alright. Well, it's good, we got.
They don't always have them.
That's why you made this play?
I think, no, I think calling is really bad there, honestly. I think calling is bad. I think, I think your option there is to fold or to check raise. I don't like calling at all. I think that's the third option.
Calling was the best option, but raising was quite fine.
Okay.
EB wise.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just saying in theory, in theory, to me, I would be, I'd rather, much rather raise than I would call there. Cuz I'm sitting there with jack high flush and a gut shot straight to draw two, and just, I just feel like. And I don't have a hand that's gonna show down very well.
So the worse your jacket is, the better is the raise, cuz you can start getting some jet, better jacks to fold, it looks like. You're getting, you're targeting jack highs, uh king highs, I guess. What's he folding?
Yeah.
Nineteen. Yeah.
You're saying that sizing should have been to twenty?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's what the solver's saying, it's pot size.
Okay, pretty sick raise. Although. Not very clear for me, why you got your raise here again?
So like, to me, I guess.
I don't have a good explanation for it, Kelly. I think it's just, it's like a sequel play for me, because it's like just the jack of hard, but.
Well, I told you, what I think, what I think there is, I've got a jack high flush. I'm, I got a jack high flush and a gut shot, right?
And you don't wanna call.
I don't wanna call because, I mean, obviously my jack high flush could be bad if I make it. Um, my odds of, and I, I don't think jack nine's showing down anything, so I think calling is my third option, that was, that's the way I look at.
So like villain's got two kinda hands here, like, what's he gonna have? He's super polar at this point, right? Like he's gonna have a deuce, a queen. Or like an air ball, or some kind of hand like gears that draws.
You think he's polar, he bets small, he bets small, bets small.
No, he didn't, he raised the flop. He raised the flop and bet the turn.
Ah, right, we bet one big blind equally, yeah.
So like, he, he's polarized himself a little bit, so he's gonna have bluffs here and like value hands, so a hand like ours has two options to win the pot. Calling the turn, making a better hand on the river, and getting value from his value. Or like pushing his bluffs off their equity. So we don't have to face like a triple off bluff, like if a, like, I don't know, what would be a good bluff card that hits the river, like a, a seven maybe, like a, a blank seven? Like he's gonna have some triple offs here and we're not, we're gonna be like jack high and we can't win the pot, so.
So having a high heart like this allows us to bluff here, that's what I have, the heart.
Yeah.
All of this here is hearts.
Right, so like when you bluff here, essentially, like it's a semi bluff, like think of it like check raising from the big blind, when you semi bluff here. You're getting folds from his strong hands and you're getting calls from his value, so when he folds, that's winning. And when he calls and you make your hand on the river, like you hit a sneaky ten, that's winning. Or just cooler his hearts when he has like the nine of hearts, like maybe he's got ten nine, the nine of hearts or the ten of hearts or something.
And I guess you don't, if he, if he gets raised back, you don't go with anything.
I just don't know if you do a ton of raising back is the thing.
Okay, well, I mean, we raised to twenty, shoves, we fold, is what I mean.
Oh yeah, I would say so, I mean, you're drawing, like he's representing made flushes and. You know, like deuces at that point.
So you can do that with the jack of heart, ten of heart, nine of heart, and it's a nice thing, okay? I'll often do your three bet here.
You can definitely three bet this, um, I think calling's fine, I think you can, okay, so like.
I think queen nine, maybe king nine.
It, it may prefer the eights, but I don't think this, I think this region's definitely pulling some three bets.
This deep, you can three bet a lot, wouldn't surprise me if almost every combo in range three bets.
Yeah, I think you're right, Pete. So you got a low jack open, you're eighty effective.
Thirty percent of the time I would think of that.
What's the rest of the range look like, just to kinda verify?
Yeah, well, we did deep stack work, it wasn't about which combos to pick, it's about how often they do it.
Well, like, I mean, so kinda what I was saying, it's like, it looks like jacks are better than queens here.
But pretty much every combo in range is three betting at some frequency.
Yeah, for sure.
How often you do it.
That's interesting.
Call.
Call. Hit and go.
Lou, you raise here, you gotta raise, right?
Hmm.
No.
The raise.
Yeah, kinda raise. I'm kind of in team, I'm kinda with team Louis here, like he's gonna have, what's he do with ace, king, what's he do with diamonds?
And he, he bets more too.
I like the raise.
Shouldn't he have polarized?
Honestly, yeah, I, I like this a lot, like you really wanna box him up, like what is, what is theories to say about that?
It was okay.
On the turn, it does wanna raise.
Thirty percent.
It wants to raise big.
Big, like mucho.
Yeah, so that was a well played hand.
Let's recall.
Uh.
What, what's the action here? Okay, open up and men three bet.
I think I like piling here.
Cold call.
With the cold call, I don't know if I wanna pile, I kinda wanna just go non all in.
No, no, lean to.
Yeah, I wanna go non all in, I wanna make an absolute mess of this.
With queen, that's right, there's a lot in here, but if you had aces, you could like make it like, I don't know.
That, I feel like that's monsters under the bed, what do you think that cold calling range is?
Go to like fifteen, right?
Yeah, I, I would go like seventeen or eighteen maybe even. Like in that neighborhood though, Ken.
Okay.
What's the preferred uh four bet size? I'm always kinda like not sure of those.
I'd make it twenty.
So it's usually like four X out of position, well, not for four bets, um, it's a weird one because there's a cold call squeeze here.
Yeah. Those are the caller and squeeze.
Ah, okay.
So it makes it kinda goofy, like I don't really know what the right sizing here is, but I, something around like three and a half to four X seems reasonable.
So, cuz like, when you, one of, when you. Things though, is when you put in one third of your chips, and that's what the effective stack is, because he has more chips than both players.
You don't.
Big blind doesn't have a calling range.
Yeah.
Can just raise or not be in the hand. So if, if he's not in the hand. Our size would be seventeen.
Yeah, so if he's not in the hand and you're raising to seventeens.
Hey, hey, here's, I'm sorry, my microphone must not have been working. Uh, my feeling is, this is fifty-six big blinds effective, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so I can't make it seventeen or twenty here, I've gotta make it.
Why, why not?
Because, because I want this guy to call off his fifty-six big blinds, cuz the kinda person that cold calls these three bets will also call off. Very, I see it all the time.
He's calling, calling range, I think, uh, he's around nines, tens, maybe.
Exactly, and I've got.
But I don't think he's stacking sixty big blinds with nines and eights and tens.
They, they do it all the time, they do it all the time.
Oh, yeah.
Only with fours and threes and, and sixes.
He has his jack suited and he's not folding.
Yeah, I know, I, I know there's players out there like that, I just. There's better ways to play hands, I think. It's just been what's been shown to me through my database work, a big leak of mine was. Overplaying the top of my range.
Mm-hmm.
In situations like that.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that one's kind of unique, but.
I don't like this raise.
Man, yeah.
I have a raising range here.
Do we ever three bet pre-flop? But I don't like this raise either.
I would think at some, I would, I would think at some frequency, you do three bet it pre-flop, Ken, but calling's fine, too.
Wait, Louis, why do you?
You cut out the.
Yeah, why do you say you don't have a raising range, Louis?
Cuz in this scenario, in position, you've got position, right? You don't really have a raising range facing a lead.
But we have a raising range.
Oh, we are in position.
We have a raising range, but I don't think this hand raises.
Never mind.
You got a pair and a redraw, I mean.
What's, what's in your raising range here in position? You know, on this board, king high, it's like the worst for imposition.
You're gonna have raises.
What are you raising?
You're gonna have sixes, fours.
It's gonna be like two percent.
Gonna have like. We ace.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be really non-existent for the most part.
Zero percent raise for this, huh? And that. Like when he bets two with that, two. Yeah, it's two or four, right?
Of what?
I don't have much of a raising range, you have a little bit, but it's five percent, right? When you have a raising range, like ten, fifteen percent, this is really, really thin for me, no?
It's coming from that region that unblocks like king X for the most part, but.
It's some strong hands in your wheels, pretty much guessed it pretty good.
And I think, if, if you just size up a little bit, look at this, this is what.
Evaporate, yeah, it evaporates pretty quickly.
So if you just size up more than thirty-two percent, which he does, you don't have an imposition in general, that's like.
Yeah, I think this is too good a hand to raise, too.
Yeah, well, it is, you got a pair of sixes with like pretty, pretty good flush blockers at this.
Yeah, I don't, I don't like this raise either.
Yeah, you won't have any problem calling a turn bet on any turn card.
Oh, darn it's way out. Don't you have showdown here with the good draw?
Yeah, I like taking.
Yeah, I like chat too.
See, this is a, this is a mess, this right here, this right here is an absolute mess.
Well, he either got there or he fired another bullet, let's find out.
Pretty sure he got there, oh my goodness, you guys.
Call it off.
I know who got there.
I don't think you get, I don't, I don't know if you get a fold.
I guess you gotta call it off, yeah. Yeah, when you. Maybe the guy just says, uh. You're priced ten nine of.
This guy has zero bluff, by the way. I mean, there's never a bluff here, right?
He's bluffing with pocket force.
He's never bluff, yeah, yeah, bluffing with, bluffing with his set.
No, there's plenty of bluffs here.
Uh, the machine, this guy, I'm saying this person, real life.
No, 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 in real life, he'll do this with clubs that turn a, a straight draw.
Look at, uh.
Or a pair. Seven, eight of clubs, ten, nine of clubs.
I'm, I'm pretty sure you're gonna need to hit a six and ace or a club to win this pot.
So twenty percent, check this out, twenty percent on the club, ace, three, and then a six, there's two left. So it's like two, three, five.
You're close to thirty percent, but not.
Thirty percent, we're at thirty-four percent, this is really close, right?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think you get to fold. Like if you give the guy one bluff, like one out of hundred times, it's like fine.
Yeah, he's, he's got thirty, or thirty percent to improve, but there's a small chance he could still be ahead.
Well, and there's also like, okay, the, well, you're actually still behind that, if he's got like eight, nine of.
I know you're on the wrong note. I know.
Anyway, we shouldn't be here, so it's not too much sense in analyzing.
So call on, just a call on the flop and then call the turn? Is that how what we should be doing with it, like just call?
I don't mind a bet on the turn sometimes, but I just don't wanna polarize this much.
Yeah, I think I bet too big when I bet, I agree with that.
And also like, if I raise the flop and I get called, I'm probably playing check on the turn is the other thing, like.
I think I checked the turn.
Like if it's single raise, I might go for two streets, like bet small, bet small, or like bet small, bet half, or something.
Clearly a check flop, check turn.
Yeah, seems fine.
What, what happened?
What happened?
Yeah, that's a good question, what happened?
I lost, no.
So what does he show up?
Chop, chop it up, a six.
He's got king, queen, pocket aids, there you go.
Oh, so that was the first bullet.
That's my first bullet.
Alright, nice.
I told you I lost.
Okay, so I call here?
I fold here.
Oh, yeah.
Two or three bet?
It's a squeeze.
Are you sure it's a call? You don't close the action though, so it probably.
Well, this deep, this deep, I think you can fold, alright, yeah, I, I think I would fold normally.
I am, uh, I'm calling if I close the action, but not closing the action.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree, I agree, I think I.
You're never getting back raised, though.
You don't know that.
Oh.
Yes, I do, it's ACR.
Fair enough.
Well, let's, let's talk about that a second, I'm under the gun, right? Yeah, I'm under the gun, this guy could be calling with uh tens, jacks, queens, you know, a lot of big hands, he could back raise me, once I, once he sees me calls. Call, he could back raise me, I, I get back raised a lot sometimes during.
I agree.
I don't like calling this at all, I'll be honest with you.
Alright.
But now that you're here.
Yes.
You get the sixes bait.
Hey, we, oh, can we verify what that range actually looks like?
Which one, the squeeze?
Yeah, like, wait, we're, we're drawing a bunch of assumptions about it, but like, what is the worst hand you're calling here? In theory.
I'm gonna say these middle angle low pairs, mixed folds and calls, and I just fold.
It might have a solution, a confront, eight and above.
Yeah, it's gonna be something like that, I believe.
Fifty, fifty.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh. Fifty, fifty, and it has a range for it, so let's have a quick look. What other hands are fifty, fifty? So under it again, raise, but then cutoff.
So requires the squeezing range to have some polarization to it, to call, I think, sixes, so.
By jack calls. Cut off.
Cut off. No, you're doing it all wrongly. It's cutoff button.
High jack calls, not loads. High jack?
Oh, the button's there, alright, I'm wrong, sorry.
High jack cutoff.
High jack, call, cut off, and back on another one.
Ooh, sixes does have been some calling, I would have folded pure.
Oh, seven is there, there.
Can we peek at the squeeze range as well?
Uh, yeah, but just a, a quick.
Yeah, yeah.
Holding ace queen off. Holding queen jack suited, the queens are very res- resilient, right?
Interesting.
Uh, Gavin has been saying that for two weeks, the queens are re- really, really bad, especially when ranges get narrow.
Apparently he's squeezing, you know, a lot of his ace side blockers, he's got a lot of queens in there, I guess, as well.
Or bet shoving, or bet shoving, but ace tennis suited and king queen suited.
Hey, will you, will you do me one favor, Louis? Will you take it up to sixty big blinds real quick? I'm seeing something weird on PFA comparatively. Okay. Maybe they just didn't run it with calls, cuz it's like at fifty, the range is very similar to what you have, but at sixty, it just jams or.
The other thing is, I was under the gun, I think, not under the gun one.
Uh, button cutoff, I jack, under the gun.
Oh, we got a player missing, sorry. Didn't see that.
Well, the blind is two to your right. It should look something a lot like this, so folding, really tight ace queen, nor four bet bluffing with ace five suited, ace queen.
Brother, I think I was under the gun.
We.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
The big blind, it's two to your right.
Geez.
Oh, oh.
Alright, here, I'll spell it.
It's very simple.
That guy. Okay, sorry.
It's okay.
Hey, it is early in the morning for me.
Hey, I hear you, Kelly.
I see the cutoff squeeze range real quick.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ken, just curious. Who did that?
That's actually very linear in a way.
Nice, we should be fairly polarized, and that's why I said, like, if they, if you don't think they're polarizing, sixes are probably really bad. Or worse, I should say, still might wanna get in there and call, just trying to outflop them.
Yeah, you're trying to flop a set or leave, right? I mean, that's what you're doing.
Yeah, but if you're calling just to, if you're calling just to set mine, you don't have enough odds.
Well, I disagree, but. Pretty deep, if this other guy calls, he's seventy-eight big blinds deep, you don't know.
My main point is if they're really linear, I think your post flop plays, what's gonna change the most, and you probably just wanna give up.
I kinda agree with Ken here. You're just gonna make your life easier by not continuing with.
I don't give up, I don't give up a lot, that's probably one of my leaks.
Here, Kelly is battling again, ooh.
Ooh. No, oh, oh, I remember this one, I remember this. This guy, this guy, uh, this guy's got the tag on him, he's, uh, he's Russian Federation, boys.
Ice, those pesky Russians.
He's got the tag.
Oh my.
So you think he has way too much stuff that just completely bricked and you wanna take it down?
Yeah, I just think he's shit. Yeah, I just think he's shit.
So is this the second bullet? Gonna be going down the tubes here or what?
Uh-oh, now what? Oh.
Good for the guy who three bets.
Right.
Or the guy who opens under the gun and calls a three bet.
Like, I could get behind the check raise on the flop, just because he doesn't have a lot of Jack X. He's gonna have like a lot of Ace King that you kind of put in the box, but when.
Right.
When the king comes. Like, his values ahead of you, his marginal continues get.
Yeah, I don't have Ace King. I don't have King, King, right? I mean, I don't have, uh.
Queens, Kings, Aces much, right, at all?
Right, right, exactly.
But what you do have is you have the, a lot of flush.
I do have flushes, correct.
I feel like you're up to your old trick.
But he has flushes too. Like, it's not like we have more flushes than he does.
Yeah, his screen rate, his squeezing range is basically all.
Can we look at that? Can we look at the filters? Can we look at the filters here and see where we're at? No, down here, down here in the middle. Just look at that filter. Yeah, there you go.
So this is facing a fifty percent pot. And he goes.
He doesn't go fifty. He goes quite a bit smaller.
A third, so more like.
But the SPR is lower because it's a multi-way pot, so fifty percent might be more accurate. Because it's, the SPR is being reduced about the same.
We don't have much of a raising range with their single card of the.
Also, I've been experiencing with bluffs on three bets too.
I think this is fine. Like, if you go to a smaller bet, like proportional to what he's actually doing in game. It's pulling from fives, fours, like this region, it's not, it's not the craziest thing I've seen today. Yeah, like, like I can honestly, I can, I can get behind some of this, especially if you think the guy's over folding and over bluffing, like it's. But. When the, uh, when the turn comes and it's a king. Yeah, you are, and this is punty, I think.
Now it's like I got myself in this spot, I must win the hand.
Well. He's only got twenty-five left, right? And, and I've got a flush draw. And my sixes could be good. He could have a screen here. He could have, could have a stun.
He folds.
When, when you check, take the check raise line and you pick up equity.
You gotta bro. You gotta go.
Let's look at five.
Look at this, um.
I mean, what else are you gonna do? Check fold? Hell no.
Dude, you guys are all out of your mind.
I know I am.
The king is not gray. Oh, well, look, it does do it.
Tiny, 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 and then it's gonna fall to a raise, right?
It's betting timing.
Yeah, but like you said, the SPR isn't quite reflective of reality here. It's close enough, though.
It's close enough to where it's not gonna shift the action to shipping it on the turn.
Alright, so a bit plenty here, Kelly.
Okay, gotcha. Well.
We're clicking buttons.
No, we're not clicking buttons. We're, we're clicking against Russian Federation players. I've, I've made up my mission and they're not, they're not gonna run over me anymore. And I got a feeling they got notes on me now, though.
Maybe I should start trying that, you know?
Yeah, they, they shared them with every other person in the, that group.
Alright, so, uh, I like.
They have their own forum and they talk about you.
I've been doing a lot of four-bet bluffing against them and it's been working like ninety percent of the time.
Going in the small blind here.
Let's, let's talk, uh, let's talk poker again, like poker hands that we're.
Okay, gotcha.
You should be folding. He's limping range.
No, 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 no. Why you fold this? Raise this?
Raise?
Yes, this is not a fold.
Is this not a fold?
Absolutely.
Eight four folds, right?
I have been studying this spot, but it's probably been, it might have been after.
I like the way you played it a lot. See?
Okay.
It's just a pure hole. What are you talking about?
It is full.
So. As we've been talking about from the small blind, you can limp a little wider. Because people don't punish you enough.
Yeah, that's correct.
So there he is, a little wider. And then he bets one and gets away with money. And you, you've been saying that if you can gain EV from stuff that isn't really in there, like this is printing.
Printing or punting?
No, punting was like.
The other.
They both start with a P. They both start with a P.
If he calls the one, then it's punting.
Yeah, he calls the one, I'm done.
Yeah, you might get to check raises some.
He bet too big, I think.
Yeah.
Is this not a fold?
No.
I'd rather raise.
To people, that's my, if it was heads up, I would raise this.
You're not deep enough to go for back doors. Your back door is not great.
Uh, with thirty or so.
Too short to.
Yeah, it's multi-way and thirty.
I mean, I gotta look at a C, but if.
Yeah, just called.
So this is a bit wide, right?
Yeah, I think so.
I thought there were heads up.
Me too.
Yeah, a bit wide here.
Yep, I agree.
You can three bet first cutoff, I think.
Some frequency.
I've been working on trying to call more on the button. It was my old style years ago before poker coaching. And I've found that I've been three betting too much from the button. And so, you know, so what happens is I go the other way. And then I start playing.
I don't think we're having, uh.
I think this is a call.
The guy in the middle here, does he have much of a raising range?
I doubt it.
Yeah, big blinds.
I think I need protection here. That's where I'm, why I'm raising.
I don't know the answer here, to be honest.
I'm not, I'm not really against it.
I got a spade. I got a spade. I'm, I've got an overpair. It's a dry board. I think this is my shot to take the pot down right now.
Of a deuce maybe?
I mean, that guy's definitely c-betting more than he should be too, so. Raising a punish kind of makes sense, right?
Problem is, big blinds in the hand on five, two, two, so.
Yeah, that is a problem. Eh, if he's got trips.
I don't think he's got deuces very often.
Got all the suited twos, right? Ace two off, maybe, probably not. He probably doesn't have all suit twos, right?
Not very many. Yeah, not very many combinations of two deuces here.
The thing is, it's such a tiny little fraction of his wide ass range.
Yeah, he's got plenty of fives, right?
I don't care if he has fives.
No.
Oh, they have no boards that are similar.
This one?
Nah.
Nah. Twos are, twos are much different because the big blind doesn't have that many twos in range.
Exactly.
Yeah, like honestly, I'm probably folding ace two off there, so I only have suited twos.
This is kind of a spot I. Long time ago where like on paired boards, like low paired boards like this, the opener has all their off-suited Broadway junk that we never have. And they're just c-betting too often, most of the population.
Right, my range is much tighter than his range.
So you see here in general, Kelly, you don't have much of a raising range in position from the bottom. Right?
Okay.
Your pocket seven here would just be a call, because you don't close the action.
I mean, like even heads up here, if we look at this heads up, I don't think you raise this hand.
Can we see the bet range of cutoff, Louis?
Yep. But remember, it's a different texture.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that two eights don't, is totally different than two twos.
Yeah.
I'm not doing that with.
Eight, eight, five, sevens are a definite call. But I can get behind this because.
The, the general idea is that the player in position here, in my mind, doesn't have much of a raising range.
Well, not in the, um, advanced tournament class.
Right, I've been studying that.
Jonathan had something where the middle position, middle player gets aggressive at times. And I think against. Population. It's not that horrible to do that.
How would we play this heads up if it was, um, cutoff button?
Look at this.
What cards are, okay, let's look at this. What cards do I want to see come on the turn here?
None.
Exactly, exactly, a hundred percent. I don't want to see, there's nothing. A seven, I like a seven. Maybe a.
Five, five deuce. Same pattern, same concept, the guy.
It's. Five fives are different. It, it's totally different than two deuces. Two deuces is unique. In the fact that there aren't that many combinations of deuces in the big blinds.
He's not gonna have that many more fives either, honestly. He's gonna have like ace five, maybe king five off, maybe, right?
Seven, five, sevens, five, six, five, four, five, eight, five, all those, all those.
Right, right, right.
He's got tons of fives.
Right.
Deuces, he doesn't have tons of. Uh, cutoff doesn't have tons of deuces. I, I just think this was.
I mean, it's hard to study mult-three-way. Well, I generally try to construct my range here as if.
Did you guys watch?
Let's move on.
Okay, but did, look, one, one point, uh, did you watch more, uh, Matt's multi-way webinar the other day?
No.
Okay, well, he would be on board this, I think. Because you don't want to be in the middle and one way to get out of the middle is to raise.
Um, yeah, Louis, I agree with you in theory. But I think against population. That bet is probably okay.
Sure.
Do, do, do.
Alright.
What about this one? So we call the three bet? Check. Matt, I've thought. Kind of have to continue here, I think.
Yeah, cool.
Do you ever check raise? I kind of like checking. I like just calling, I think. I don't know, he's.
I was gonna say, I don't hate just jamming.
Jack's, Jack's good, a queen's probably good. You got two, an open ender, backdoor flush. This is.
Oh, wait, let me check this guy. His, his screen name sounds familiar.
Got wrecked.
Um, yeah, he's a huge loser.
Yeah, I am.
What, Acumen?
A huge loser. My mom tells me that all the time.
His screen name's not Acumen, is it?
No, he's just joking, Joe.
What's up, Nick?
What's up?
It's on the flop would be mostly a call.
Yeah, Jamie's not out of line though, does it, Tom?
Yeah.
Uh, folds? I thought you were gonna call that.
No.
Call. Uh, this is maybe okay. This is probably okay. I don't know. I would call though. I think it's probably.
Yeah, I call as well.
I'm never jamming.
I'm calling too.
But don't say never.
King, queen, I zone.
Yeah, I think it's a call. I think that's a mistake.
I like this. I like it.
Oh, no. Okay, so bet call, pair board, not a great one. Bet, call, we just. Do you go for value here?
Uh, that's a good question, Louis. I think you.
Think I go for value, because I don't think he checks many queen.
Yeah, I don't know if he's taking a bet check with a queen here. Like, I don't think he cares, right?
So he has like maybe like a jack?
Jack ten. I'm fine going broke with aces here. I'm always jamming.
Okay, so, yeah, okay, nice. Two big blinds should call?
Yeah, I like calling.
Bet four.
Too big, I fold.
I think I'd still call there. Now you're stuck.
It's, it's multi-way is the problem.
The guy sizes up on the flop and now he sizes down.
Was it multi-way?
Yes, hubba dub dub called.
Oh, yeah, I think that's a fold in the middle.
So.
Alright, well, you call, you gotta call now. You gotta call now. You don't get to.
Can you ever, can you ever click it or something?
I don't know what clicking achieves. You're behind his value and.
And my stack size is not gonna allow me to do it either.
Yeah. What is, what, did he win that? What happened?
Yeah, yeah, he had a queen. He had a queen. He had a pair of queens.
He had queen nine of hearts.
Whoa.
Clicking it, uh, Galen, I want to get him off eights by the.
On the river.
Kelly, how many times have you been all in? Like fifteen times?
So what happened here then? That was kind of quick. Did he check raise you and you called?
Bet one, check raise, stuff.
Well, I'm, I've got thirteen big blinds in second pair versus the button. I mean, what am I gonna do?
You gotta call. I don't.
You don't stuff it. My round?
Well. I'm not a big fan of stuffing, to be honest. I kind of would just play call. Because you're giving his like bluffs a chance to get out the pot and you're isolating his value.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think, I don't really mind him folding, to be honest with you. Nines need protection. I, I, I mean, if he's got Kings on beat, right? If nine, if he doesn't have Kings, I need protection. I don't want to see a ten, Jack, queen or an ace. Well, I do want to see an ace, I guess, but.
If he shows you a hand like Jack ten with one club. Or like, if he ends up folding like seven, eight of clubs or something. I, I, I think it's kind of, I don't think it's great, uh, because you kind of want to have your equity here, like.
I don't know. I, I, I don't know what I've, I'd have to look at that.
If only there was a tool we could look at.
I know.
Kelly, real quick, the question, um, God's Big Toe always asks. What, what worse hands are going to call you? Or what better hands are going to fold?
Well, I think eights call, sevens call, eights, I mean, uh, six, I think any pair calls. I don't think he's folding any of his pairs.
I don't think they're check raising really either, though.
Yeah, he's not check raising with eights.
Some are, maybe fives.
Okay, I missed it. Who check raised? I thought I check raised.
You bet one big blind and he check raised you.
He's on the button, right?
No, he's.
No, he's on the, he's on the big blind.
But I'm sorry, I'm, I'm totally, okay, I just forget everything I said, because I don't even have, I don't even have the, uh.
You gotta put it at one.
I'm totally off on this hand. I don't know what I'm doing, I guess. What? Where are we at? Small blind, big. See, this thing, this thing, this, uh, reviewer is like offset. I, I'm.
It's stirring you off. It, it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's off position. So that's got me messed up.
Louis, does he have a, does he even have a c-bet with this hand?
So is this small blind versus big blind?
Yeah, we, we can check box.
Yeah, okay.
We do have, huh? Okay.
And we are rapid fire this morning.
Is this small blind versus big blind? Is that what it is?
No.
It's UTG one versus big blind.
Oh. Okay.
You raised under the gun, he check raised you, and then you're shoving in with second pair.
I think depending on the tournament context, there could be some arguments for jamming here. If we really want to prioritize equity denial. But in like a high ICM scenario potentially, but I don't think. This is the spot to do it.
No, this is just a call.
I can see you hovering, Louis. Yes, I see that. Is this an ICM solve? Is that what I'm talking about?
I'm totally confused. I still don't know what the hand is. This guy looks like he's in the big blind to me.
He is. You check raises you and you.
Kelly, uh, here, I'll, I'll walk us through it real quick. You open EP, he calls.
Okay, got you. Okay, now.
And then, then he checks the big blind. You bet one on this texture.
Oh, got you. He check raises me. Okay, okay, I'm good now.
Okay, and once he, once he check raises you, the conversation is kind of around, are you supposed to call with this hand? Or are you supposed to stuff it?
Yeah.
Yes, I think I should call with this hand. Yes, I agree. I agree with you. Unless you're gonna catch an eight. Oh, my god.
If we had this nine with, with the ace of clubs, are we more prone?
How many monitors?
Or call again?
Was Kelly responsible for breaking here?
I'm going to go back to your question, George. What was your question?
No clubs are jamming here with them, like, nines are playing passive, check call with their nine.
Right, I agree, I agree.
Okay.
I probably, uh, I probably had seven, eight games going at this time.
I said if we had nine of, uh, let's say, hearts and ace of clubs, let's say.
Yeah, Louis, Louis answered that question.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Poorly played, I agree.
I don't even think it was bad, it's just it's, it could be played better, I don't think it was bad.
Alright, Kelly, listen, you've been shoving your stack. Every single opportunity you had, and they've, they've been all questionable shots, okay? And this here. You get a pair of board from the. Twenty-five D, with the ace deuce, the wheel, that gets better ace to fold, this is the perfect one.
Yeah, actually, this is like, this is.
You don't do it! You don't do it! What is this?
This is honestly, this is like a bread and butter, like, check raise spot, like, this is like, one of the best hands, you got backdoor straights. It's a paired board that's disconnected, so it's hard to defend, you got the best flush combo, cuz you unblock all of his flush continues with like king, queen, yada, yada, yada. Yeah, this is, this is like a slam dunk check raiser.
Oh my goodness. He go like that instead.
You know, I don't hate this right here, this.
Yeah, no, I'm okay with this.
You pick up marginal equity, you benefit from getting folds, if you get called, it's not the end of the world.
So much better though, if we check raise flop and he just folds if we don't get in that spot, right?
Or if he, or, or if you check raise can, he calls, and then you can just play polar on the turn and just put it in.
Yeah, 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 for sure.
I just picked up an extra six big blinds by doing that.
Yeah, but I, it would be a great check raiser, I think.
I, I feel like your line's good, I just think it's way low frequency, and like to simplify like the game with like good solid heuristics. Nine, nine, three, two tone with ace, deuce of diamonds is just.
As good as it gets for a check right now, I think.
Yeah, I think so too.
All the wills.
Do you wanna?
You don't have a calling range, look at this.
If you wanted to make an argument, like, one combo that would be better is like ace three or ace four, just because it makes, but he doesn't have deuces, so it doesn't really matter.
By the way, it's not all in on, it's not all in on the turn.
What is it, what is it doing on the turn?
I don't know, but it's not all in.
It is, yeah, it is, it is all in, what are you talking about?
We pick up equity, so.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. Gotcha.
But, uh, depends also that check raising size that we. That we follow on the flop, if we go bigger, we can save on that.
I like this call, th- these are good calls, I feel like I'm, I used to miss these a lot. Um, yeah, it's kinda whatever, now.
Stop or call?
I think there's no small blind, um. I don't think, I think you can three bet these, I think you should probably three bet this combo, to be honest.
And you know who this guy is, right?
Yeah, yeah.
This guy's a screamer, he's a screamer.
There's no small blind on.
His name is All End Sven!
Yeah, I think we need dial it back this morning.
Yeah.
Only the person.
I'm gonna lose my mind.
Only person holding the pillow gets to talk.
Out drinking last night, Nick?
What?
Were you out drinking last night?
I was in drinking last night, I drink every night.
What is this hand again, Kelly?
Oh, this guy plays, this guy, this guy plays, uh, this guy usually wins me, I just have to tell you that. This guy plays really, he clicks back all the time, little clicks and all this kinda stuff, and I was just, he tilts me, I probably was just tilted on this one. I'm just being honest.
You level, you're getting a lot of leveling orders, man.
He's a hu- huge winner.
Yes, I do, yes, I do. That's why I like to play live.
It would be a nightmare.
Why is there thirty big blinds in? What happened?
Alright, so let's take, can we step back and actually like analyze this hand?
What do you wanna stick back to? Look at this, we just check raise the turn again.
Well, what happened on the flop?
One big blind call.
Why don't you pay attention if you wanna analyze it?
Yeah.
Bro, there was fifty thousand people talking over everybody constantly, we're talking about live, we're talking about this, we're talking about that, I can't fucking think straight right now.
His eyes are on the poker table, Stan.
Yeah, so then you can't have it both ways, where we have to replay the whole hand every time.
I don't play on Fridays.
We see that one big blind, we called, and now we're here.
So do, do we answer the question? Does anyone know if you check, if you three bet this pre-flop?
No, we didn't look, I, I thought no, but we never, he.
Look at the pot size, there's seven, of course he didn't.
I think we three bet, but there is no small blinds or we're not prone to calling. Yeah, he put the hand in the, uh, thing and it didn't solve it.
So like, a good idea when you're analyzing hands is to start with pre-flop, instead of starting with turn, then going back to flop, and then thinking about the river? Or am I crazy?
You want, you wanna three bet, you wanna call, I'm sure it's mixing here, here it calls.
I'm confused what you wanna analyze.
Okay.
Do you wanna know the optimum, what he should have done pre, or what actually happened pre?
I wanna know if you three bet.
Well, considering the pot size, I would say he did not three bet this pre-flop.
I don't, no, no, I'm not asking, Kelly's not the arbiter of theory, I wanna know what you do in theory, I don't care what Kelly did. I don't care what Kelly did, Danny, Danny, use your eyes, use your ears, pay attention, come on, keep up.
I think it's probably a jam, and, no, a thirty, it might mix like three bets jams and calls. Maybe ace queen jam.
But it does change without a small blind.
Yeah, it's, it's just.
I'm just not sure how, how the heuristic changes with. Without the small blind.
You're gonna need ace queen to, to jam here, but it is gonna have some three bets probably. Oh, I'm dead.
Good game.
Uh, thirty bags button, big blind versus hijacks, like a pure call, sliver of jams, and that's assuming small blinds in the hand, so that's like six. About six, six tenths of a big blind more.
Okay, he's low jack, not hijack.
Oh, he's low.
Ace, ace queen's the jam, ace jacks mostly a call, a little bit of.
Yeah, it is mostly calling.
Yep. Yeah, you wanna keep the worst stuff in here.
So from here, we're good, right?
Think so.
Yeah, I'm okay there.
From here. This is not okay.
I'm folding here.
I don't know what I would do here.
I mean, you can call, maybe, I'm not raising.
I don't, I don't think you can fold there. With two overs, you're just giving him credit for a ten? I mean, it's a paired board, it's pretty dry board.
Are you playing in the jam club rivers or something?
Oh yeah, I'm gonna jam, didn't I?
We didn't get there yet.
Okay. I got the ace of clubs, see?
If you make this call, you can lead the river if a club comes.
Right?
Yeah, so, so in-game, if I'm calling here. Like, I have it in my head specifically, no matter how many tables that I'm playing, to, like, dunk all in on any club. As soon as the club comes out, like, as fast as possible, to just make it look terrifying.
And I'm gonna tell you, this guy can be doing this with anything, this guy is, is a very, very diabolical player. Very good too, I mean, he's, he's a very good player, I'm not saying that, but I'm saying he can, he could have anything here, absolutely anything.
Yeah, yeah, like, you're saying he has the appropriate amount of bluffs and maybe.
Exactly, he's, he's a, he's a top player, exactly.
So you should be calling turn.
Yep.
You can.
Well, I would, I would.
That are slightly worse, like ace nine, ace eight.
Well, I'm pretty sure I was tilted at this point. Just being honest.
Uh, goes for one.
And he, see what he does? Yeah, he does this shit all the time.
So, he's got a value hand here, believe it or not, I bet.
Well, you're gonna pay one and find out?
Yeah, you're gonna pay one and find out.
Right, exactly. Yep. Yeah, I play against him a lot, too.
It is interesting that he, he reopens the action for one big blind.
Exactly, because he knows that I, because he knows I will shove, I will shove on that. And, uh, and he would called off and stacked me.
That's mysterious.
Done it before.
Look at this. Call.
Yeah, I'm trapping him.
You, why jam? Just click it.
Like, he's short enough, no?
LP, is there any word that, uh, on two hands ago, on the king jack, uh? Anyways, let's move forward, not, uh.
Yeah, he saw I checked raise with, with air, and he's never folding eights there, so. We got a thing going on, Mrs. Jones, hubba, dubba, dubba.
What are you? Believe it.
I think you need to show down here.
Yeah.
Yeah, this guy's just checking back too much, maybe?
He's a, he's a very good player, I played against him twenty years ago. He was one of the top players on the internet, I don't know if he studies now or anything, but he was back then.
Turn, I would click.
Yeah, then I would've raised turn.
Can't let it go check, check river, right?
I was hoping he's gonna bet one.
Yeah, you raise all in on the turn every time you don't have it. And when you have it, you don't trade.
Well, now you know how to play against me. Cuz I'm very predictable.
Yeah, but if they know you got bluffs though, when you're doing that, you wanna be able to, you might as well just slam it in when you got the goods.
Yeah, so here, I think you should. Not give up on the turn. Bet here like, uh, as normal.
Yeah.
And facing this here, you need to raise.
Yeah, in the small blind, you're not gonna have a lot of trees, so your check raises are gonna be a lot of queens, and he's gonna be able to continue with nines, even if he finds a fold on the river.
Yeah, I don't normally play this way, uh, this, against this guy, this guy's gotten, he's in my brain, I was on tilt, there's no doubt about it, and, and, um. So, I agree with everything you're saying.
No, that's fault.
Is this a good three bet?
Uh, I doubt it, I'd rather call this component, pretty bad.
Where are we in the tournament now?
That's a good one.
Good question.
It's still early, it's twenty-five hands out of over five hundred.
Out of two hundred.
Oh yeah, you sorted VP IP. It's still, it would still be early.
Easy bet here? Check raise, gotta call, call or raise? I would just call, check, 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 check. Top pair, alright. Just call, yeah? Bad flop, I'll just call, I love it. Burn checks. With five, yes, that's good. Raise, perfect, yes, I can. Oh yeah, it's queens, and he raises on a king turn. Hmm.
Very puntless.
They all think I'm crazy.
Uh, I think I three bet that.
Three bet for sure.
I three bet this.
That's bad, uh, maybe miscue it or something.
Uh, don't three bet enough, maybe?
That's, uh.
Why didn't you pick that jack seven two then?
Four, maybe, it's, it'd be a fold.
Just a fold.
Yeah. Now a three bet here?
So rigid. It can be a three bet if he wants it to, come on.
I'm, I'm, I'm looking at, uh, I'm looking at the huds too, when I'm doing this, you know?
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say that this. That felt like a really high attempt to steal. Player, you just, you were just like, fuck this guy.
Exactly.
This I fold pre-flop, to be honest.
Yeah, the most unexpected thing happened, original opener falls and big blind fold call.
I got the guy's heart, so I'm, yeah, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to leave for a few minutes.
Louis, do you call previous, uh, combo? Thirteen, effective.
I would just all here, for sure.
You call?
Yeah. Uh, how do we like this bet? I don't like it at all, I think it's pretty weak.
They click, they float, so after we click.
Yeah, that's the, the sizing you wanna take, when you have like tens or jacks.
Exactly.
Not the size you wanna take in seven, sevens probably just.
Or like pocket twos.
Yeah. Yeah, but I'm gonna have, like, I'm gonna have.
Bold here, it's the disaster.
Jack ten of clubs that can take that size, right?
Yeah.
Open, nice. Jump. Maybe? Maybe double, ah, there's, there's a missing, uh.
We have an eight.
Small blind.
Against late positions, it's not great. Uh, I think a lot of aces offsuit are gonna jam.
I think this is a jam, I think ace eight is.
It, it's a jump too, but.
I think it's one of your.
Maybe call, uh, a bit more as, uh, as a small blind, but I pick ace seven, ace six.
Uh, he's supposed to be aggressive with the offsuit aces in the middle there, so it's gonna want to do it with better and worse ones.
Yeah. So nine and eight, very often, you're against late positions, not great. Bet one.
What do we call?
Uh. Are you following here?
I fold here, honestly.
Is it worth it to call what they saw?
No.
I don't have no idea, honestly.
I don't think so, queen, jack, five? So.
Oh, I think we need a diamond.
Yeah, we don't have a diamond, but.
And even if some aces are calling, this one's not, uh, high up enough, I don't think.
Definitely need a diamond to call here. So not a great peel.
Now I think he could dunk.
He goes for the dog.
Ooh, not as much as I thought.
Hmm.
Yeah, the problem is the SPR is too low, like, his queen is just gonna be really resilient against our dock there.
Yeah, that makes sense. But now he has to go crazy.
Yeah, now we've set it up, that, like. We have to bluff, and he's gonna bluff catch with his queen a lot, and like, there's a six.
That's a big bet on the flop, on his part, and, and.
If, if flops a set, it's okay.
Yeah, but.
Very tight play, no?
Uh, would size up and play, uh, the chips. All in. Nice. Uh, uh, we can fold this, yes.
Ooh.
All in?
All in.
Ooh.
I think that's in there, that's bottom.
Hmm, I don't know. Team five off.
Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah, it's seven big blinds.
That's fine.
Uh, prefer just to call here. How about you guys?
Yeah, I think that's short, we could just call.
I don't know, we see bet, uh, this flop, it's a nice high flop.
I don't think we get to call two streets here.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I agree. Uh.
I keep betting.
Maybe we do if, uh, if it goes check, check on flop, but.
Yeah, his, his range was uncapped because he's supposed to check.
Alright.
And the flush draw missed, we're not blocking, uh.
And this is his best, gonna find a call with a ten.
Yeah, I agree.
You guys thinking we should call here?
Yeah, I, I, I would call.
Yeah, against the small bet, probably, because he's probably value betting a ten at this, at this size as well.
Yeah, but he shouldn't be betting a ten.
Yeah, when he.
Betting a ten on the turn.
When he dunk leads and then bet, he dunk led flop, right?
Yeah, uh, no.
Flop with check, check. Okay, never mind. Yeah, I'm calling.
I'm not calling two street.
It was multi, it started multi-way. He bet, he betting the three players on the turn.
Is having a king good here or bad?
Good.
I think it's bad because you block king, jack, and queen.
What, what? It doesn't matter because it's a double flush draw board, so he is, he's drawing primarily from the flush rather than the straight.
You block the heart, you block.
And he's gonna be.
Sometime he jumps or three bets, uh, king, jack, uh, and, uh.
And he's not gonna be pulling from his king extra bluff, he's gonna be pulling from lower cards, queen X, jack X. What the hell?
I don't think this will give us an accurate answer, cause I think heads up, he has to call. Did he bet large? Yeah, he bet, yeah, okay.
Half, but. And then king ten off. There's a call.
Uh, L P, you could make it that he bets seventy-five, just, uh, because, uh, he makes it fifty and that is the, the big blind in that. To be just a bit closer to the actual. Anyways, okay.
Went small on the river.
Yeah.
Uh, he went like forty percent or something.
And we're still up here calling when he bets large.
Yeah, heads up, it's a, it's a definite call. My, my questioning is, do you call when he starts betting into two other players?
So see, I thought the king was mad, seems like the jack or the queen are mad.
It's cause he's bluff, bluffing jacks and queens, he's not bluffing kings.
Yeah, is he not?
The king, like, if he is king, queen off, he shouldn't be betting river. Yeah, see, king, queen off is, uh, checking.
Okay. So having the king is cause he's betting king five, king seven, king nine. Not great. But having a queen is worse, or a jack.
Yeah, but do you think he bets those on the turn? In a multi-way pot?
Uh, clubs or hearts or?
Uh, for sure, uh, combo draws.
Okay, I'm back.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
You're lucky we skipped a few atrocities.
Huh?
All in, call, let's go.
Let's go.
All in.
All in.
Let's go.
Tip up.
Oh. Hmm, bet, hmm. Kelly's gonna call for sure, we know it now, but is this a good call?
I don't think so.
No. I don't think so either. Oh, he folds.
He folds.
Good.
Must have tightened up.
I thought he was gonna check raise.
He must have tightened up.
You, you know, I'm gonna tell you the predictable thing about me is I'm not predictable.
Well, looks like you are a little bit.
And, and he's making, he's, he's making it to two point seven, which is a sizing telling someone.
Well, that is not a great plan.
Well, wait a minute, hold on a second. At two point seven, you're gonna, you don't want to be calling, you want to be raising. At two, I would just call. At two point seven, I'm raising.
So you want to sacrifice to invest more, uh?
No, no, when, when they, basic, I'm just saying in theory, when they, when they open for more, you're not supposed to call because you're not getting the odds that you need to call. Now with the king ten, I'm not saying that was the right play, okay? I'm just saying in theory. We want to be raising those.
I would, how I would approach it is take a, a little bit out of the bottom of your call range and then expand a little bit the bottom of your raise range, so it looks like king jack was the bottom there.
Yeah.
So king ten's probably reasonable to expand a little bit.
I think so too.
Yeah.
I agree.
You don't have to adjust like too much, but yeah.
I'm not normally shoving with king ten there, but in that spot I was.
Another side note, his two point seven bet wasn't that out of the ordinary, cause he had a hundred and the small blind had over sixty. So it's a touch large, but.
We check back the flop?
I don't think so.
We bet it?
Yeah.
Uh, I think, uh, that's a good check, but.
The hand I wanna check the most is still bets the flop.
Yeah.
So king I born, you're, you're high jack versus big line. For twenty big line effective, it's a range bet board.
Okay.
Don't check her.
Yeah, maybe if we went on that again, we could check more. Tom?
Two seven deuce is just so dry.
Yeah.
It's four.
Sure.
Yeah. All in. Click it. Nice.
The dates?
You see, he does it again if it's the same guy.
Um, is this a good check raise?
It's fun.
Yeah.
Think it'll mix.
Often do you check raise here?
This is close. I, I like to have king ten here to check.
Yeah, I agree, king ten, um, and above, I'm always check raising.
Check raise is just like eighty percent of the time.
Is it because the nine's higher than the eight, Nick? Like, you had a ten on the board?
I don't have ace, king, I don't have king, queen a lot, so I have king, jack, king ten, king nine is just too high up in my range.
So, so if I had, so. Yeah, so let's say, uh, let's say there was, uh, a, a ten or a jack on the board, would you still check raise there?
No.
I don't think so either. Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Well, remember, like, king eight deuce is a, a range bet board for him, so he's betting, you know, over eighty-five percent here.
Right.
So I mean, your ca, check raising any king is just gonna be good.
Does it do that?
Well, it doesn't have some check raising with the ones below second pair?
See, I don't see, I don't see a check raising. It does a little bit with king six, king five, skin four, king three, doesn't it?
Yeah.
So it really likes king deuce, really likes king, oh, oh, there's a deuce on the board, I'm sorry, okay? Yeah.
Look at the suited ones.
So, so, so king nine is, is kind of, is kind of where my, I mean, king eight obviously is two pair. So really, it, it kind of narrows down once you get to king seven though, so I, so I'm correct in my thinking, I think. But I probably could have checked raised this one. But if I check raised, I wouldn't have got that play out of him either. Sometimes when I got top pair like that, I don't check raise guys that I think are going to try to two or three barrel bluff me.
Yeah, it's a good exploit.
Did bet one big blinds here, maybe?
Think it's a spot where you bet a lot.
Yeah, and, uh, small sizing, maybe.
Fifty fifty, okay? Yeah, no, turn should mostly check back.
Okay. That's kind of an exploit too, I mean. You get the double check.
Hmm, whoever skip this, uh, nine four from defending.
Why don't you bet the turn?
That's right, is this a good turn? I think it is. Could be a, a really good turn bet here, no? Yeah, fifty fifty.
What stage of the tournament are we in right now?
We got, uh, we're approaching about one hundred seventy hands, but hand number sixty.
Okay.
You can kind of tell if you look at the blinds, you can see the blinds.
Yeah, what are they?
So maybe what, uh?
One third of the way through the tournament.
Yeah.
Ten, twenty. Ten thousand, twenty thousand.
Okay, so there, there is some I C M, uh. There is some I C M in this sport.
I think we're in the money with those sa, stacks.
It could very well be.
What tournament is this?
This is the forty K one oh nine.
Uh, do you start with a hundred K then?
I don't think so. I've got the, he's got the, uh, let me look at the sheet here. I've got it here.
Thirty-five K.
Thirty-five against them.
Yeah, you should be in the money.
On.
Oh.
Corn.
Any ways in here? I actually like this one.
Interesting.
Cause there's a lot of bad turns, bad rivers for your hand. I don't know if I'm ripping, but I'm making it three X for sure.
Three X is like a jam.
Yeah.
It's pretty big though, buddy.
Can we see if, uh?
Check, check, okay, man. Four liner. If I said bet, have it ten.
Yeah, this is a tough.
I think it's just a false, not that.
Yeah, I fold here too. It's a four line.
Yeah. Seven, you just fold.
Seven, uh.
What about this one?
I think this is an exploit.
We can even jump this, uh? If, uh, that is I C M.
Yeah, majority call here.
Majority call?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I remember, uh, y, y, you had said, uh, some time ago with I C M, uh, late position versus late position, okay? Some ace five, ace four.
Cooler.
Yeah, you definitely, you definitely can in that spot.
Yeah, but the small blind was a bit, uh, higher than chips.
But it, it doesn't matter too much, like, once it goes raise, jam, like, their range has to be super tight.
Is this a spot where we should see that?
But it's against three players, two players.
Multi-way, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't, I think it's a check all the way.
I don't hate a stab. But I would mainly check.
Well, I don't wanna blow my equity, like, if I catch a king or queen here, I figured.
Love it more with, uh, win second.
I mean, this is straight. Yeah.
Check ten, falling some king highs and, uh, win highs.
No.
I didn't know D T O had multi-way.
That is a, a bad, bad.
It's connected, Louis, change it to connected.
Then seven, six, right?
Yeah, there's one straight available. I guess nine, seven, five would be close.
Yeah, like a check, uh, there's like too many other good hands we have to, that wanna stab, right?
Well, plus, like I said, you know, it gives me a chance to catch a king or a queen and if somebody's got a king, jack, I can, I can cooler him here, you know?
That would descend, honestly.
Nah.
I don't wanna get check raised here.
Check.
This is wrong, you need a ten on the board, cause it's gonna change things, like.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
We don't even have three to a flush though, Louis.
There's a big blind, yeah. High jack. So twenty, big blind, high jack and button. Twenty. And then we need a suited one, right? Ten, seven, six, that's what these are.
Is there really only one flop with a ten that they give you?
There is one right now.
Interesting. I didn't know D T O had this. I used to have D T O.
Ten, seven, six. With a flush draw.
I mean, when we bet, we, we, we prefer to have a diamond, right? So if we had, uh, king, queen off with.
We do with jack.
The king or queen of, uh, diamonds.
Jack eight, six, so it's very similar to ten, seven, six.
I don't know, ten's a very key card, you know, I, I.
Right, 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 right. Gonna move on, I just wanna see.
Yeah.
We have a betting range here, but I have like king, queen in position.
It's suited, yeah.
We do sometimes.
As I said, uh, we need a diamond.
I think king, queen is a tandem, you like to check a lot because you can, you can cooler, uh, king, king, yeah, you know, that, that would be my, my feeling about the hand.
Nice.
I think I would like a stab at some point here, cause if you get a size to fold.
You, you can even, uh.
Better kings to fold.
Click it back on the pre-flop.
I don't think. Suited, you just call.
Okay.
End verse blind, a sign, king high, just want to show down.
Eight, two. Raise fourteen. On the turn.
I would make it to an amount that uh. Like seven and then. Jump very, very few calls and. Even if we don't hit uh. That's a good candidate to put in our all-in bluffs on the river. And then have some additional folding equity on the river. If we make it seven with like, if he has ten behind or. Twelve behind, you get what I mean, right?
Yeah, with this with this sizing, you effectively tell him he has no fold equity.
Yeah.
So if you're gonna go this sizing, you can just jam it.
No, but I don't want to jam it. Because I want to say, I'm gonna get to, I'm gonna get to save five if he pull, you know, see, I'm saying, I get I get him to fold without putting the whole thing in.
Yeah, the thing though is you.
Are you gonna call if he jams? No, I'm saying that if he. If he call, if he if he jams, I'm calling, right? But my raise is essentially saying you're all in without going all in.
Yep.
He's not pulling for four or five more on on the river.
Is there a hand you do this with that wouldn't put the rest in?
No.
So then you might as well put it in. It's the same thing.
No, it's not. No, it's not the same thing. If I miss, I can get away with uh. I'm not calling five on the river if I miss.
Oh, if he calls and then.
Right, 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 exactly.
Okay.
In fact, I could have, in fact, I I in fact, I don't like my raise size. I wish I would have gone a little smaller. I could have gone like, I could have gone like ten, I could have gone like ten and got the same thing done.
Yeah. Yeah, like, once you make him put in half his chips, he's pretty puck.
Exactly, exactly. So that that's uh. I would say that I wish I would have gone a little smaller there. I think I went too big there. I don't even remember this tournament.
Yeah, so you should be calling on the turn.
Yeah.
This is a good bet.
I don't think you can make a mistake here, checker bit.
Yeah.
I'd prefer to check, but I don't hate betting. I think probably bets a decent amount. Uh wait, small blind's really short. I think I'm checking back.
I don't hate taking two, I like taking.
I think it's a high-frequency check with the backdoor flush draw. You really want to see a turn, you don't want to get jammed on.
Yeah, right. I agree. I hope I checked. I did, huh? Good for me.
So you guys think checker?
Yeah, I I like checking.
If Kelly checked, he must have fell asleep.
No.
I I would blast it, Louis.
So it's small blind, big blind. Nothing.
There's completed equity, so you're never blasting, right? You're gonna either go really tiny.
I am blasting.
Right.
Small blind has none of this. And this is a big net board.
Small blind smashes this.
Small blind has none of this. Look how short he is. He's like, what does he have that hits this? Tell me, one hand. Nine, ten suited, ten, jack suited, ten, ten, jack.
Jack ten suited.
That's a jam. All of these are pre-flop jams. Jack ten off, alright.
I think this hand's way too good to jam. I don't think you ever want to jam this. I think this is way too good a hand to jam.
I'm, that's not at all what I'm saying, Kelly.
Okay, tell me what you're saying.
I was asking him to name hands that are in the small blind's range, and the first three hands I said were gonna go all in pre-flop, they're not in range.
They're they're flat in the suited connectors mostly.
Which flop do you think is more similar, eight, seven, six with a flush draw? Or nine, eight, six with a flush draw?
It's gotta be completed, so it's gotta be eight, seven, six, I think, because you got three.
Yeah. Uh but then we would have to look at like king nine instead, because we haven't open-ended.
Right.
Yeah.
It's gotta be, I think, a pure, mostly probably a pure check or a tiny, tiny bet.
I think that's very often here.
You bet a lot.
Not that often, a lot less than I thought.
And tiny, right?
I don't know. Hey, Louis. What do your colors mean?
Uh these are the the. Straight up the colors from uh DTO. Uh check here is green.
Okay.
Yellow is the the smallest bet. Brownish is the kind of.
Alright, thanks, thanks.
So this.
Pairs and redraws are going bigger and over pairs, it looks like.
This are were like fifty fifty here, so you're you're supposed to find fifty percent bets here from the button.
But you're supposed to bet small, correct?
This is hi- this is hijack button, big blind.
Oh, I had the right ones selected.
And also, it's a little different because the small blind, it's this is like, um, what's it, symmetrical stacks, or I don't even know what the word is, but this is like. You know, there's a short stack in the middle, it makes it a little different, right?
I mean, isn't the big blind short too? He only has like twenty?
Twenty-five, I think.
Lily.
Yeah.
Isn't?
But small blind's like a fifteen.
Oh, there we go. You fixed it, okay.
Yeah, the small blind.
Yeah, now king nine mostly checks.
Yeah. But it's.
Small blind shouldn't be having a calling range there, right?
Now we see it's using some polar sizes with nine X.
Well, I mean, one more point, look at the small blind range and see how much he's leading.
Yeah, he should have some leads on this board.
Not that much.
So what do you do with aces here?
On the button?
Yep.
You bet. It's a big bet.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think I would figure over pairs. Um not entirely, but I think a lot of your over pairs would want to bet here for protection.
Protection from what? I mean, they're already got the handmade.
The the ten X, the the ten X that the small and big blind can have here.
I don't think you're gonna get him to fold, though.
It's fine.
Well, you're charging him.
Yeah, it's just fine.
Yeah, I agree with that. I I'm not saying it shouldn't be a big bet, but protection maybe is the right wrong word.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, maybe, maybe. Yeah, but you don't want, you don't want to allow them to get a. Che- a a cheap price to draw to. You know, there's six outs or whatever they have.
Right, but they're not holding, though. Yeah, but they're not. I'm saying if we had aces, Ken.
Yeah.
I was asking about aces.
Oh.
Alright.
I think we got enough on this. We can move to the next street.
Check, check, get this trade now, with the flush completed. We want to bet?
Oh, gross, small.
Value bet? Or no, the board, the flush completed, the board paired, I don't think we value the straight.
It's too hard to get called by.
Oh, eight, I have pots, about eight.
I like to check back. When the flush completed and the board paired, I mean.
I don't, I don't think I like my big bet on the turn.
I agree, I don't bet big there.
Yeah, it's too big, I think.
Yeah, I don't like that on the turn.
Yeah, with the flush, yeah.
Got away with it. But.
Uh. Is this a good defend?
Could could I ask a question about that last hand? So so let's say I bet small there, okay?
Yeah.
And you get and you get check raised.
Yeah.
Not liking it too much, right?
What do you, what do you mean? You you've made a lot.
Okay, no, no, we got, we got, no, we got jack. Why would you say that? That doesn't have anything to do with this hand.
It does, Kelly. You're calling every check raise and everything, and now you're talking as if you were worried of getting raised. You're gonna call this.
You call and you fold the.
No, I'm saying. What should I be? I'm trying to learn. What should I be doing in theory, Louis? So so if I, so if I, so if a jack turns, so the jack turns, right?
Mm-hmm.
So so I bet small here instead of big, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so he check raises with his ace of diamonds.
Yeah, you're kind of gonna continue.
Right, exactly. That's my question.
Yeah.
So it'd be kind of nice to see. I guess we don't have anything to look at that with.
So he should. So he shouldn't be check raising his ace of diamonds in the middle because there's completed equity on both sides of him? Right?
Yeah, I'm not even sure you would.
No, 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 well, I'm I'm not saying, I'm, let's say he has diamonds, okay? Let's say he actually has. So he has a, so he has the net flush, let's just say.
Sure.
So I bet small, is he just gonna call, or is he is he supposed to check raise there?
He should call because the other guy can have worse diamonds and.
Yeah, but.
Squeeze.
Didn't the small blind fold before it got to him? The start part doesn't matter.
The small blind has the ace of diamonds here, right? Oh, no, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, when he check raises, I mean, it's just a normal spot.
Yeah.
Right?
Alright, so I think we're gonna wrap it up on hand seventy-three. We're about halfway in the hand history. Do you guys want to continue on Monday?
Yeah, we'll see on Monday.
Thanks a lot, guys. I appreciate it.